Okay, we're going to call the meeting of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners to order. Sam for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greitner.
Here.
Chairman Bone.
Here.
Item three, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. There's one other thing that I'd like to add on here. I see they have the drain offices in. I didn't see a spot where they were going to do an update, so we're going to put that...
Is that yours, Duke?
I'm sorry?
Great.
Let's put...
This is him.
Yeah, we can do that, okay. I might do some changing up. Is Bob going to be here tonight, you know?
About five minutes out.
Okay, so if he pops in, we'll throw him in for the update, because I know he's got to go to another meeting, so, okay. So, let's have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to move the wetlands mitigation stewardship obligation to item 11H.
You want to make...
Good. You want to have him moved up, right?
If Bob shows up, he's just going to give the update on that.
I was going to say make it 11A.
We'll do this as a separate deal, but yeah, we'll put it in accordingly, so we can, yeah.
Is that a support?
Yeah, I supported it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the agenda?
Move the agenda as amended.
Support? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item five, minutes of previous meetings, items A and B.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of the March 16 commission meeting and the April 6 standing committee meetings.
Support? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item six, no proclamations. Item seven, on the consent agenda, items A through M.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve item 7A through 7M on the consent agenda, and I beg your permission to not read all of those.
Support? All right, we can do that. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving on. Item eight, reports of standing special committees. Commissioner Greitner?
Yeah, the one thing I wanted to mention was, now that we have... He's writing me a note.
See that?
Yes, I can do that.
All right.
Been sitting next to him for six and a half years, you've got to know that I'm suffering here. Yes, now that we have Smart 911 phone system up and running in our county, if you go to www.Smart911.com, you can sign up for the Smart 911 system, which puts personal information into a system, but it's kept private. That personal information may be things like where certain things are located in your house, how many stories your house is, where the bedrooms are, animals that you may have, things that you may keep in your house that could be potentially a problem, so that 911 that responds in any way, be it fire, EMS, police, have some knowledge coming to your location. So, take that number and take a look at it, so, www.Smart911.com.
Okay.
Just one quick one.
Yep.
Planning Commission at Riley Township, the master plan the county did for Riley Township turned out great, except they got all the maps wrong.
Uh-uh.
They're going to be getting back to David Struck, all the zoning maps.
Can you get back to us on that when it's complete?
Yeah, already been sent out, as you got captured.
Okay, thank you.
Duke? Nothing tonight. Greg?
Carl? As you know, we belong to the I-69 quarter, the next Michigan corporation, and I'm your representative on the board. And basically, that's first the four counties along I-69, see if I can get this right. There's St. Clair County, LaPierre County, Genesee County, and Chiawasi County. And this board's been in place for about five years. One of the big advantages to this board in terms of industrial development is when you create a Tifa district and you're capturing taxes to finance, say, infrastructure improvements to assist a new company coming in. Currently, our cities and townships, we could only capture some of the millages. The biggest millage, of course, is the school millage. Under this act, we could use the next Michigan corporation to actually capture the school tax. The only caveat to that is, there has to be some relationship between transportation and the company, that they call it a modal nexus. And right now, only Chiawasi County and the Village of Perry and Perry Township have been able to do anything with that. They've gotten together and built an industrial park together, and they've gotten their second tenant, and so we just approved the second capture at our last meeting. But it's a financial tool that is unique to that board. Howard is actually your representative, but they call me Howard Jr. there when he's not there. He's also the secretary, I'm the assistant secretary. That's all I had to talk about tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Howard?
Nothing at this time.
Two things, I'm going to have you guys check your calendars, and I'm going to bring this up later. We are going to be taking a little road trip now that everybody is back from their vacations and stuff. Probably looking sometime in May, trying to do something on a Friday. We want to go tour the Huron Valley humane enforcement, I don't have the actual name in front of me, and then the Macomb County shelter. I want to do those in same day, so we would start out, we'd probably go down to the Huron Valley, which is located in Washington, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere down that area, and catch it on the way back. So I'm going to be bringing up some potential Fridays that could work for the majority. I know not everybody, but I'd like to find a date that we could at least get four or five of the commissioners to take a little road trip. DTE, we've been talking a lot about some of the things with the mandates that are in place to go from 10% to 15% renewable energy. Myself, Mr. McConnell, Dave Rushing, Dave Struck sat down with the two people from DTE that are ahead of the renewable energy for them. We have on April 24th and on April 26th at 6:30 PM, we're going to be hosting some of the alternative energy discussions, more of an informational, educational kind of thing. Greg, Dave, I thought it was very informative, all the information that they gave us are going to go through that exact same thing, so I would encourage the commissioners, if they're able to attend. It's going to be the same program both nights, so those are the dates, if you can make it. I'm not going to get into all the talking points or any of this stuff, but there again, if you can, I think it'll be a lot of good information for you. That's really the two things that I have. And Mr. Wiley, we're going to do something a little different here. You want to give us your quick drain report, because I know you have to go to another meeting. Are you guys, okay. We're doing you a special favor here, so.
I'm assuming you guys got our report, and I don't know if you've got a paper copy of it other than that, but I'm curious if you have any questions on what we presented to you guys.
Well, the one question that I had, Bob, when it came up at our last meeting, was how the credits were going to be priced, but Gary answered that question at the meeting.
Anybody else on the report? Just one comment that I want to make, and I know we've been, it's interesting, because when we sat with the Drain Commissioner from Sanlack County, how much they have in their Drain-at-Large Fund, you know, they've been aggressively cleaning their drains since, I think, '86, no petition projects, you know, we're still doing, playing a whole lot of catch-up here, and...
Yeah, they've got some massive drains up there, but...
Yeah.
They're sending a lot of water our way, and the past eight years, we've been pretty aggressive trying to play catch-up, so.
Yeah, so.
That part of the Bell River watershed?
Which one?
You said from Sanlack coming down?
Sanlack, they don't really hit Bell River, but...
No, Bell comes from here, I don't think any of Sanlack.
I'm talking about the Bell River watershed, not just the river itself.
Right, no, yeah, they kind of hit...
Where's the water coming from, that you said they're sending a lot of it down? How is it getting down here?
Well, it comes through the...
We have several smaller drains, Willoughby, Tonman, Elk Creek, Sanlack, St. Clair, I can't think of them all, but a lot of smaller ones. The Black River is the main, but that's, yeah, Mill Creek is one.
Mill Creek's a big one.
Okay, thank you.
But it hits that and comes down.
All right, anything else for Bob?
I could go through the numbers, but the book's that thick, and you guys...
We've got all the information.
We'd be here till tomorrow, so.
Keep cleaning those drains, buddy.
All right.
Okay, we're going to move on, then we're going to jump into citizens wishing to address the board. I have two citizens wishing to address the board. First one is Susan Atwater, 413 Botsford Street, Port Huron, topic Challenge.
Hi, and thank you for letting me talk to you tonight. Last month, I took a few minutes of your time, and we talked about the 11 steps to making a successful animal shelter. This month, I would like to take a few more minutes and expand on where to go for a good model for this. As you were talking earlier, it was about Huron Valley. There are several of us that took a couple hours of our time about two weeks ago, and we went down to Huron Valley. All I can say is wow. When you see the customer service that they provide, it's absolutely amazing. We all have a list of things that we do at work each day, but did you know that there's a few things on that list of duties that aren't actually there? It's all about providing that extra customer service. Did you know, you always want to make sure that you're providing that customer service to people that they'll remember. Smile when you speak to them, it's contagious. Empathize, don't sympathize. Speak clearly and honestly. Listen to communicate, not just to respond. Each of these points were demonstrated as soon as we walked through the door. We were immediately graded, we asked them if we were able to take any pictures, the first response was yes, please do. We asked them where we were allowed to go, and they said anywhere that we see that's open. The people actually listened, they communicated, it was great. The employees and volunteers were more than willing to answer any of the questions that we had, and they said if there were more that they could not answer, please step up to the desk, and the administrators would gladly answer the questions. I was there for about 10 minutes when I walked past a small area. The marketing that is used there is absolutely amazing. It encourages the public interaction and their education. I'd taken a snippet of some of the information that was available when we walked through the door, and I gave each one of you a small packet. I would like to encourage you and every person here to please go visit them. It's an absolutely wonderful model. They also encourage if you have any questions, or if you need any help, to let them know, and they will gladly walk you through it. So today, I'd like you to leave with you the challenge to take a small part of your day and go visit with Huron Valley. They are open seven days a week.
Next up, Iris Harlingley, is that it? 1075 Hard Huntington.
Iris, I thought I butchered it last time.
I don't know, every month it gets worse and worse. Let me start by saying that this is not the topic I had prepared, but I got two emails yesterday, one from Courtney Prot Saunders, who is the head of my PACA, who has come and talked to you, and the other from Deb Schott, and Deb is the chair of the Michigan Pet Fund Alliance. And what she did, or what both of them did, was forward to me an article that both of them said you have to take to the St. Clair people. So forgive me, I'm going to read you this article. It says, "How does a city bring hundreds of high-paying jobs, raise millions in sales taxes, and revitalize small businesses? It stopped killing animals at the pound." This month, Ozark, Alabama City Council passed an ordinance prohibiting the shelter from killing healthy animals, repealing a law that allowed healthy animals to be killed after 48 hours, and requiring them to be killed after 30 days. Ozark Mayor notes he has many dogs, has had many dogs throughout his life. He said changing to a no-kill shelter was something he's always wanted to do. When asked about the cost, he replied, "We're not in the business to make money," excuse me, "we're in the business to save animals." On this issue, that's my kind of mayor, you know that, "We are ethically bound to do it regardless of costs. Might does not make right, but it does create affirmative obligations. But here's the rub, when your community saves animals, it also makes money, lots of money." Why did Google lease a 29-story building in downtown Austin, creating hundreds of high-paying tech jobs? According to Google, the city's animal welfare policies were part of the community brand that drew the company there. Austin's no-kill policy and its 98% live release rate was attractive to community executives because it's attractive to young, vibrant, pet-loving workforces. How did a Florida community realize a $71 million financial impact, including 5.7 million yearly on veterinary care, pet supplies, other local shopping, and an additional employee at each of the area's 179 for-profit veterinarians? Local life-saving at the SPCA, Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals? How did a Nevada community increase its sales tax revenue by tens of millions annually? It cut killing in half and doubled adoptions. Why did a Virginia community build a new shelter? To attract businesses, according to a local editorial.
You'll have to close up your three-minute wrap.
Okay, I'll be even more direct than that. A no-kill community is good for animals, good for people, good for the bottom line, and very, very good for the bottom line. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on. No unfinished business. Go to item 11A, new business approval of county disbursements from March 2017.
This time I'd like to move to approve the St. Clair County disbursements from March 2017 in the amount of $18,904,183.21.
Support? Discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Greitner?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. Item B, the purchase of the rapid-response CBRNE vessel.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of an agreement with Precision Welding Custom Boats for the purchase of a rapid-response CBRNE vessel for the dive time in the amount That must be dime...
$59 million?
No, $159,000. What did I say?
Millions.
Did I say million? Those big numbers get to me, I just listened to David.
It's a big boat.
I think it's for the dive team, the dive time.
Support.
It's... Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. Item C, the Bell River watershed wetland mitigation bank.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the Bell River watershed wetlands mitigation bank credits by sale agreement and to authorize administration to execute agreements as necessary for the sale of released credits.
Support? Question for you, Karen, I don't know if you know this, how many credits do we have for sale, or are there, the credit is a one acre, I'm assuming, is that how that...
We currently have six emergent wetland credits available and 1.6 forested available. Once the state releases all of our credits, we should have approximately 28.
28 credits, so the calculation on a credit, is it at the 1 to 10 ratio, where if you go out and buy existing wetland property, you have to mitigate from a one-acre wetland that's destructed? You have to purchase 10 acres of wetlands, or if you can reconstruct high-quality wetlands? Do you know that at all, as far as what the correlation on what a credit equates to?
The 1 to 10 ratio is correct. I know they have different rules if the credits that you replace are in the existing ecoregion or if you go outside the ecoregion, so.
Okay.
And it also depends on the type, too. You know, the forested are the higher quality than the emergent or the scrub shrub.
Okay, very good. Any more discussion on that? Roll call.
Commissioner Greitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yep.
Commissioner Tomlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. Item D, the Resolution 17-04 Crispin Blue Way Drain No Wake Ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move that we adopt Resolution 17-04, the Crispin Blue Way Drain No Wake Zone Ordinance.
Support? Bill, why don't you just explain to the people about the Crispin Drain? I know you worked on that thing pretty diligent.
Yeah, we've been at it for about four years now. They cleaned out from the, it is a county drain, but without using any county funds, we were able to get a grant from the EPA. They spent about $3 million cleaning out that drain all the way through and all the way over to Crispin Road on Harson's Island. Once that is done, and that's all part of a program that's aimed at taking the St. Clair River off an area of concern list, it's one of about five or six projects that we've done up and down the river here in the past four or five years. And the reason that we put the no-wake in there is because when they dredge that out, they dredge it to a certain depth, and the banks are at a certain angle, then they slope those and flatten them, and then they raise it up just a tad more. That gives the animal species and things of that nature in the deeper waters, and then on the shallower banks, which is near the water, and it's very shallow and gradually entering into the drier shoreline right there, the different animals that would breed in that immediate area. Along with that, they went along and they did a lot of plantings that will hold the soil in place, things that grow in that particular area, things that are native to that immediate area. The idea of a jet ski or something like that going up and down that area would disturb all of that animal life and that plant life that's been put in there that costs a lot of money to do. Now that that part of it is done, then it turns over and becomes a recreational piece. So there are canoes and kayaks, small dinghy boats, things like that, even if you want to run your jet ski up there, there's some businesses up in that way, you can go up that way, you just have to do it at a slow no-wake speed. We are in the process of incorporating that into the County Blue Ways project. It will become, and it's called the Crispin Blue Way, it will be added on, I believe we have 16 or 17 canoe and kayak routes through the county, this will be added on as one more. And then to kind of top it off, on June 10th, which is River Day, the event is going to happen down there, we're going to start at the Schoolhouse Grill on Harson's Island, and all the kayakers will be down there as they head underneath the cut for the Columbine Road, where you kind of paddle underneath that road through a tunnel, they're going to cut the ribbon that particular day, so I'll keep you guys posted on it, we'd like to see as many people down there is, can be down there, it's wide open to the public, so, June 10th.
Okay.
I have a question. Was that money part of the Great Lakes restoration funding?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that was part of it, the part of the, or the Cotrigal Park that they created down there, part of the Marine City dredge cut that was down there, was done there. The Cuddle Creek in Marysville was done with that, and then there were two more of them done in the Port Huron area, I believe. I think there were six of them altogether, or five.
When I met with Congressman Mitchell, I brought up how important that funding was, and I had assurances from him and his staff that they were going to try to retain that funding.
That's the one that Trump wanted to cut?
Yeah.
Yeah, he was going to scalp it, right? Okay, good, good point. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item E, the Manning Table Change for the Health Department.
This time I'd like to move to eliminate a full-time clerk typist II from the Health Department Manning Table in the WIC program, and to add a part-time clerk typist II position.
Support? Discussion? Howard?
This, kind of related to this, we had the Health Department meeting today, and Greg was saying that they have some extra funds, and they might be looking for hiring, like a nurse practitioner, to use the funds to provide services. Apparently, that funding has to be used fairly soon, so don't be surprised if they're not before us very shortly asking to hire someone and use those funds to do it.
Would that be, Howard, would that be similar to the program, they had like a one-year program a couple of years ago, two years ago, where they did the breastfeeding, and I think they hired somebody full-time for one year until that grant expired? Is this a similar program?
I think it's very similar.
Okay.
They have the funds, and to expend it to provide the services, I'll let them give you the details.
Okay, that was a good program, thank you.
Just thought I'd mention on this, that it will result in savings of $32,971. This is the Manning Table Change.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving on. Item F, Resolution 1708 opposing the construction of a nuclear waste repository in the Great Lakes Basin.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to adopt Resolution 17-08 opposing the construction of a nuclear waste repository in the Great Lakes Basin.
Support? Discussion? I know we had a presentation, God, it's been a couple of years now, that thing, they've been probably, like, into that thing three years now, kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think this is the second one we've done. I know Elginak and Clay both redid theirs also.
Okay, one of the things, and I'll just bring this up, I don't think a lot of people realize, in Concordia, because I had some people question me on this, the largest nuclear power plant in North America sits there already, okay? So it's not a nuclear plant that they are proposing, that is there, it was actually a storage component to that, is what they were looking to do, so just clarification. Anything else on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item G, the Lawn Service for the Foreclosed Land Bank Properties Award.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the contract for lawn maintenance of county-owned foreclosed and land bank properties for the 2017 season to John Soiko, contracting in an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call on that, back up, back up.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. Item H, which is the agreement to provide financial assurance for the wetland mitigation stewardship obligations.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement to provide financial assurance for the wetlands mitigation stewardship obligations for the Drain Commission stock through the district project.
Support? Discussion? Bill?
Chair, does this affect our bond rating in any way?
No, it doesn't. What this is, is we will be providing a letter of credit to assure our financial assurance, similar to what we do with the landfill, instead of having these funds on deposit at the state.
Okay, thank you, yeah, this is something pretty consistent that happened, so. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitner?
Yeah, this is something pretty consistent that happened, so. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Administrator's report.
Earlier this week, I received a call from an individual that is interested in purchasing the county building at the airport that we are currently using for equipment storage. So we have had some preliminary discussions. We are getting an informal appraisal to see if it's something that this gentleman would be interested in moving forward with. I have had a discussion with our Emergency Management Director on potential relocation of that equipment. He did not have concerns about the equipment that was in there, finding an alternate place to store it. So as the discussions progress, I'll keep you informed. Our IT department is, has a vendor that approached them. They are interested in leasing space on our tower that's in Marine City, and what this tower would, what they want to do is put equipment on there that would allow them to provide high-speed internet to Cotreville, which, where it's currently not available. So those discussions are ongoing right now. Depending what the agreement or contract looks like, that may be coming to the board sometime in the future. Next month, our Convention Center General Manager, Gino Giacumbo, will be here to give you an update as to what he's been doing in his first month and a half of employment, but there have been a lot of new events booked at our Convention Center, and there's a lot going on right there, so he's excited to come, give you an update, and let you know what's been going on and what he expects to see in the coming year. Administration continues to meet with a small work group that is working towards the pathways homeless shelter transition. Tomorrow, there is a group of individuals that will be traveling to Ann Arbor to review the model they're using. They have kind of a different model to addressing homeless. It's not a shelter. They look at various small housing units or apartments that are located throughout their community, and that's where people are housed, that allows families to stay together and children to remain in their existing school. So tomorrow, they will be learning more about that. Unfortunately, I am unable to attend, but I will update you after our next work group meeting to see how that went. Just a reminder, next weekend at Goodell's Park is our Earth Fair on the 28th and 29th, so if you have time, I encourage you to go out and see it. It seems to grow in size every year with the different vendors' displays, along with We should be closing by the end of this month on the sale of our first wetland credits. With the standard agreement, we do have .84 credits that have been sold. We are just finalizing that agreement. And we also have one other person that is interested in purchasing additional credits. We currently don't have enough credits released to meet their need, but we are hoping that they will purchase everything they can from us, and we are also working with the state to see if we can get additional credits to release, so we can hopefully meet all the credits that they need at this time. And the Emergency Services Breakfast is May 5th. If you have not RSVP'd for that yet, please let us know by the 28th, so we can forward that on to Emergency Management. That's it.
Okay. Questions for Kerry? Motion to receive and file Administrator's report. So moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item 13, miscellaneous business. Got a couple things here. June, July, and August, we go on road for that. We have takers. I left a message with Chris today, she knew about June, July. June is at the city of Marysville. July is at the city of St. Clair. In August is at the city of Elginak would like to host, so we have one additional that would be open for September. So we'll find that. Dates. I don't know what works for you guys. I'd like to get, take a little road trip here down to the, a couple of the different places to take a look that I mentioned earlier. I don't know if it's Thursday, Friday. I know some of you guys travel on the weekends, those types of things. I know not, it's not going to work for everybody, but I'm looking at either the May 11th, 12th, or May 18th and 19th. I know we have our board meeting. Is there certain days that work better for guys, don't work? I know we're not going to be able to get everybody. I will send an email out. I mean, I know their hours are pretty set down there.
I'm going from May 5th to the May 23rd, so.
Okay. David?
I mean...
Pretty flexible. Duke, you got a real job, so I'm only going to ask you. Greg, are you in town?
Neither one.
The 11th works better for me than the 12th.
Okay. Howard?
11th or 12th?
Okay, I'll, I'll shoot for those two days. I'm going to email them tomorrow and then see what comes up, so tentatively...
The 11th is a Thursday?
Yeah.
That's better for me.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. First choice is 11th, let's say.
Thursday morning, I have golf.
One second. I've seen you golf, Howard. I'm just trying to get my priorities right. So 11th or 12th, I will email those, the two different individuals, and then I'll send that out, so kind of keep those open. That is that. Item 14, receiving file.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we receive and file packets that were sent to commissioners, the packing information that was at our seats when we some left meeting, and any other information that's been presented this evening.
Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item 15, adjournment. So moved?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we are adjourned.